With the prayer and the pledge of allegiance, so please rise. Dear God, as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for the direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders, may we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your blessings on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Let's lift the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Counsel Martin.
Here.
Counsel Mercia.
Here.
Counsel Milonazo.
Here.
Counsel Rourke.
Here.
Counsel Samaras.
Here.
Counsel Belanger.
Here.
Counsel Mayor Elliott.
Here.
Counsel Kennedy.
Here.
Counsel Leahy.
Here.
It's nine present. Nine present. This is a special meeting, and accordingly, I will read the notice that was posted. Notice is hereby given as required by Rule Six of the City of Lowell City Council Rules that the Lowell City Council will hold the special meeting of the Lowell City Council in the council chambers on Tuesday, January 21st, 2014, at 5:00 PM. The first purpose of this meeting is to continue the discussion, to establish the process and procedure for hiring, selection of the next city auditor for the City of Lowell. The second purpose of the meeting is to continue the discussion, to establish the process and procedure for the hiring, selection of the next city manager for the City of Lowell. The public is invited to attend by order of myself, Rodney M. Elliott, the mayor, as well as Michael Q. Geary, the city clerk. This week, the Human Resources Director, Mary Calery, did provide information that was requested at the last meeting. What is the wish of the body on the city auditor? Questions? Why don't we take up the first? Shall we take up the job description that was included? Okay. Ms. Calery, is there anything that you would like to provide to the city council?
I think I put everything in the packet to move the process along so that you guys would have everything. The yellow highlighted areas are the modifications for the position. If you would like any other changes, you can just let me know.
Okay, questions on the job description? That includes the salary range of eighty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty and sixty-eight cents, the minimum, to maximum of one hundred fifty-one dollars and sixty-four cents. Questions? Discussion? Counsel Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did ask for some information to the city human resource officer about the contract that they had in, well, it wasn't a contract. By charter in Drake, they're not allowed to have a contract, but color what you will, they have a compensation type of an agreement. To me, it's all the same, it's just the wording, I guess. And I asked if we could have a model to go by to see how they do it, but we didn't get that in the packet. So what I did was, I called the town myself, and they, someone came over with nine copies so that we could take a look at what they had, because it's wise to get a little bit of everything. I don't know, there's four people here that don't support a contract, and Dennis Pindick has been serving the town of Drake for like twenty-seven years, and I thought, what does he have that we could probably look at? So I included that on everybody's desk this evening, the mayor, and to see what we could look at with that. So I haven't had a chance to really look at everything. There's a portion on there that paid for somebody's moving expense, I'm not saying we're going to have to do that, but it'd be a guide to look at as well, so thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Mercia. Further discussion? Counsel Martin?
Just a question as to where the salary min and maximum comes from. Is that from the grid? The personnel ordinance grid?
Ms. Calery?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll say Counsel Martin.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm thinking about our discussion last week when we decided not to really advertise the salary. This is a little different position, and I guess I don't feel strongly about it whether the salary should be posted like this or left to the end to be negotiated for the right candidate. So I guess I just raise it as an issue. I don't know how others feel about it, but I think, you know, it's not a chief executive-type position, so people probably do want to know what they're in for if they apply. Others may feel differently.
Counsel Martin? Any other discussion on the job description? Counsel Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Kennedy?
If we could just, I know that it's very important responsibility for coordinating and overseeing the maintenance of munis. When I asked the present city auditor, Cheryl Wright, what important qualities someone should have, she said munis experience, but she also said municipal law. Is it possible we could put that in there somewhere? Municipal law?
Sure.
Thank you.
Any objection from the members? Okay, we'll include that in the description. Do we need a motion on that? Mr. Clerk, I'm Adam Solicitor, that we include that addition to the job description? Okay, motion by Counsel Mercia, seconded by Counsel Rourke to include that additional language in the job description. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion carries. Counsel Kennedy?
Yeah, just a couple of things. The duration of time that this would be, that the job would be open for people to apply would be similar to the, what we intend for the managers, would be for, say, a month?
I was gonna get to that next item once we agree on the job description.
I'll just wait on that, but let me just follow up on Counsel Martin's comments. I don't have strong feeling about there being a salary range for this as it's described in the job description, but I do think that doing it, wording it the other way, the way that we intend to with the city manager, gives us more flexibility and maybe attracts other candidates who maybe would shy away from the job if they thought it was, you know, maybe for another ten thousand dollars, for instance, we get other applicants that we won't get if we have a salary of a hundred thousand. And I don't really know, I know that we have a few of these here, but I guess the short of it is, I don't have strong feelings about it, but I wouldn't mind doing this one the same way, you know, wording it the same way.
Okay. For those who have looked in the Beacon Magazine, which is the publication from the Mass Municipal Association, it is, you've seen that there are ranges, and then there are salary, certain salaries that are negotiable, and then sometimes the language is just negotiable based upon qualifications, so what is the wish of the body on this particular job?
Mr. Mayor, let me put it as a motion, and we'll see.
Okay.
Okay, so I would make the motion that we list the incumbent's present salary and indicate that the salary would be negotiable. I'll second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Counsel Kennedy, seconded by Counsel Belanger, that we list the salary, including language that includes negotiable. Further discussion? All those in favor, the motion, signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion carries. Any other discussion on the job description for the city auditor? Okay, hearing non-motion to accept the job description as amended by Counsel Milonazo, seconded by Counsel Mercia, and Counsel Mercia on the motion.
That's fine. Are we gonna establish a deadline when we put the ad in and submit applications by the certain deadline?
Right, I was, so if there's no objection, well, all those in favor of adopting this job description, signify by saying aye, and the opposed, the job description is adopted as amended. Moving on to the next item, establishing advertising guidelines as well as deadlines for the auditor's position. Ms. Calery, you and I spoke today a little bit about timeframe to place the ads, and it doesn't take very long, she already has the advertisements and their, you know, who to contact in place, so Ms. Calery, you indicated a couple of days to get these in the newspaper, and once they're in the newspaper, just to let members know, they are immediately posted online on those newspaper websites, and they will run in addition in the print version, but, Ms. Calery?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, so we're looking at just a couple of days to get it in, and if it's any indication from when I posted the mayor's job, that, once it's posted online, whether it's the city website or others, people see it, it's real time, and resumes do come in right away, so, you know, the timeframe for advertising, it could be scaled back a little bit, most people apply online, there are some that may go to the newspaper, but in large part, I can't recall how many, but ninety-plus percent came in through the city website, correct?
Yes. I explained to Mayor Elliott that if you give me a timeframe, you want it to go for three weeks. I can set up the dates from the time we line up the paper and the other publications, I'll just move the date out for three weeks, and we'll set the date across the board, if that's your intent. If you'd like to do it for two weeks, four weeks, you know, whatever you think, just give me the number of weeks you'd like it advertised, and then I'll set the dates from the time the publication goes in.
Today being the 21st, we could get the advertisement in the newspaper, let's say the 23rd, two days, so that would be the first day to solicit applications, that would be the 23rd, which is Thursday, so from that timeframe on, do we want to count two weeks? Counsel Mercia?
I know we had discussion last week, and there was discussion about keeping it in for a month. Personally, my belief, and I'm not saying that I'm right, but if you can't get someone interested within two weeks, you're not going to get somebody. I don't know, I would rather go the two weeks, and let's take a shot at it with two weeks.
Okay, so do we want to establish the timeframe starting the 23rd? A week would be January 30th, another week would be February 6th. Should we extend it to the February 7th, that Friday, just giving folks that extra day to get applications in? Counsel Leahy, Counsel Samaras, and Counsel Kennedy?
Thank you. My suggestion was going to be just to go to the 14th, just give it, so we go back a week and one week more than what Counsel Mercia suggested, so my suggestion would be the Friday, the 14th.
Okay. Is that in form of a motion, or are you just suggesting it?
Well, I guess we'll see what everyone says.
Okay. Counsel Samaras, and then Counsel Kennedy?
Speaking of this, I believe this is the most important job in the city, as we're all aware. I really think we should give it the full four weeks. There are a lot of people who would want to come to this city, but I think a lot of people might be hesitant to make the decision to look at their own place that they're at, where they're working, look at their own issues, and I think you need to give people, if you really want to show that we're making a major effort to get the best candidates we possibly can, I think you need to show that we offer them time. So I would go to the four weeks. I'd prefer that.
Counsel Kennedy? And then Counsel Belanger?
I guess I think there's two different things. One is the window of time that people would be able to apply, and so maybe three weeks or four weeks. I think it's, and then the second thing is, how often does the ad run? So in other words, are we just running the ad once and then waiting a month and see what comes in? I'm not so sure that if someone's out of town or for some other reason misses the ad the first week, then they're going to miss it unless it runs multiple times. So I guess I would be in favor, I'm in favor of having it run multiple times. And I think a month is a good amount of time. Sometimes for positions like this, maybe it takes people longer before they can decide whether or not they can be a legitimate candidate. It's not something that you can necessarily know, and I think beyond that, it's, we shouldn't assume that just because we run the ad this Sunday that everybody's going to see it this Sunday, and so they have just a week to apply. Maybe there's people that wouldn't see it for two weeks, and then they apply. And I think also, we shouldn't assume that because most of the people sent their resumes in through the city website, that that is where the information originated for them. In other words, somebody could see it in the Boston Globe when they're on the train, and then go look online five days later and find it again, and get the specifics of how to apply for the job. So I think the more places we can place the ad, and the amount of time, the number of times within reason that we can place the ad, the better off we are, and the wider the net's going to be. And I think that's really what we should be looking for on this job, because it is a very important job, is keeping the net as wide as we can.
Counsel Belanger?
Yes, to you, Mr. Mayor. I've got mixed feelings on this. I think that four weeks, with all due respect, is a long time. I think in this job market, I think four weeks is more than ample, a little too much in my opinion. I'm concerned on the other end of a lapse without an auditor, somebody in that office. I know we, there could be an interim or an assistant for the time being, but I'd rather not have a lapse, I'd like to avoid that if possible. You know, I think two weeks, it might be too soon, and four weeks might be too much. So we have until February 28th, I believe, so maybe, you know, this council is all about compromise, we meet in the middle around a three-week range, and I think it'd work out perfectly where they wanted to be outgoing, and the incoming would be, I think the timing would be just about perfect, so I just think four weeks in this job economy is a tad bit too much, so that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion? Counsel Martin?
Well, I agree with Counsel Kennedy, we're really talking about two different things. One is how long the ad's going to run, the other is how long the job stays open, and I guess to me, the second one is the more important one. And I guess I have a question for the human resources manager. The chart, one of the charts we have shows that there's thirty days, no charge. I assume that's the online portion of all these publications, is that?
Right. What I was going to say is, we could advertise in the paper for one Sunday, but the ad will continue online for thirty days. We can advise them that we only want the ad online for three weeks. We don't have to keep it for thirty days, but even though it's in the paper one Sunday, it will continue to be online for thirty days.
To me, the online is the more important of the two, and I, you know, I think, we talked last week about keeping things open for thirty days, so to me, if that's free, I think we should take advantage of that, and I think that's the appropriate time period anyway. And I, and all, is there a comparable publication for municipal finance, professionals, municipal finance? There is an association of, that I know we got an award from in preparation of the budget. So I'd also, I also think, similar to the City Management Association, we should be in that association's journal and website as well. So to me, if we had those, all those online sources open for thirty days, the number of times it runs in the paper is sort of immaterial to me.
Oh, you're right. I think members should be conscious of the cost of running an ad in the Boston Globe for two days, as well as the ICMA. So I just, and that's included in the information that's presented to the council. Further discussion on the time? Why don't we take these two separate? How many times do we want to run this ad, knowing that the thirty days is, you know, essentially free? Why don't we take up that first? Yep, Counsel Kennedy?
Maybe it makes more sense to do it the other way around, because the window of time would probably determine how many times we run the ad. Do you think?
Whatever the council would like to do, one way or the other, we just, you know, if we want to, if we want to run it just one time, that may dictate, but let's, let's get the number of weeks that we want to solicit applications, and then we'll go to how many times we want to. Counsel Leahy?
Okay, thank you. So I make the motion that we run the ad till Friday, February 14th, I think it is, so that after, so beginning next week, it'll give it three full weeks for someone to apply.
Okay, motion to advertise and solicit applications until February 14th. Seconded by Counsel, seconded by Counsel Mercia. On the motion, Counsel Milonazo?
Thank you, Mayor. I would, I don't know if I could move in substitution, but I would move in substitution that we adopt the human relations recommendations, however, we scale back the February 28th date to thirty days from the date that the ad runs. So instead of, again, February 21st, would probably be around February 24th or 25th.
Okay, that would be a substitute?
Mrs. Calery's recommendation is February 28th.
Well, we have to address the amendment first, because you can't substitute an amendment, Counselor. So any further discussion on the original? It wasn't original motion, wasn't it? It wasn't amendment. Okay, so substitute motion by Counselor Milonazo, second on the substitute.
Second.
Discussion? Yeah, there was a first, and there was a second on the substitute motion. Discussion on the substitute motion to extend it to a thirty-day period from, what time, Counsel Milonazo?
Whenever Mrs. Calery indicated she can get the ad placed.
Twenty-second?
Three days.
Yeah. So that's a four-week timeframe. Okay, further discussion on that substitute? Yeah, it was seconded, Counsel Milonazo by Counsel Samaras. It was seconded. Counsel Kennedy, and then, let's go, roll call?
Okay, before we do the roll call, can I just ask? So the ad, when's the first time the ad would run? That would be on a Sunday? Or are you talking two days from now?
Two days.
Right, to get, we should be able to get the publications going, we should be able to get it in this Sunday, yes.
Okay, all right. So online, it would start in two days' time, and then it would run in the newspapers on Sunday?
Yes, but we want to keep all the dates consistent.
Yes. Okay. So the four-week time period would start as soon as that hits online?
Correct.
So it would be a little bit less for, if we're going by next Sunday, it'd be less than the twenty-eight days? Right?
Yes.
Like twenty-three days.
If we, I don't have to, I can use the date I get it online. We try to do it all together. It's not that it would run from the date, that Sunday's date, we're going to have, say, you know, the 23rd, three weeks out.
Okay. I don't have a problem with anything, I just wanted to be sure that I knew what I was voting for, that's all, that's, I just wanted to be sure I had it clear.
If we get the ad up and running in two days, which would be the 23rd, that's the date it's going to start. I'll push it out thirty days from there.
Okay.
If that's clearer.
Yes.
Okay.
Members clear on the substitute motion? Counsel Martin?
Just have it end on a business day, though, right? Give people one last, like, the 23rd to the 23rd ends on a Sunday?
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay.
Yeah. We try to give the last day as being a Friday, if we can, if not, we'll go as close as we can.
Okay.
Further discussion? Roll call? Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
No.
Counsel Milonazo?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Belanger?
No.
Mayor Elliott?
No.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
No.
Five ayes, four ayes, four nays. Okay. Moving on to the publication aspect of it. What is the wish of the body? The recommendations, I think the only change for the city auditor, no, that's right, she does have it listed, Mass Municipal Auditors and Accountants Association, that would, that's similar to the ICMA, so there's no charge for the Mass GFOA, which is nice, no charge for the MMA Auditors and Accountants Association. What is the wish of the body? To run it one, why don't we just go through the list? The MMA, it's a hundred and forty dollars, makes sense? Moving down, Boston Globe, one Sunday run plus one weekday run is two thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. Do we want to proceed with that, or do we not? Counsel Leahy?
I would suggest two Sundays and two days.
Run the auditor's advertisement for two days?
Yeah.
Second.
Yes.
Okay. Two Sundays and no weekdays, is that was correct? Because this indicates the two thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars is for one Sunday ad and then one weekday run, correct, Ms. Calery? Okay.
And that concludes, does that include any online for the Globe?
Monster.com.
It goes right online, correct? Counsel Kennedy?
So the motion is two Sundays, two weekdays?
So we're going to double the cost of two, to fifty-six hundred dollars, fifty, fifty-six forty-eight for just the Boston Globe, correct?
Yeah.
And then bear in mind, I just want to remind members, then there's two Sundays and two weekdays in the Lowell Sun for one thousand one hundred seventy-eight dollars and ninety-five cents. Counsel Milonazo?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think two Sundays and two weekdays for the Boston Globe is a little aggressive. I do understand that the Boston Globe does have a weekday employment section, I believe it's on Thursday, I could be wrong on the date. So I do think it makes sense to do one Sunday run and one weekday run, and make sure it's in that employment section during the week. So I won't support Counsel Leahy's motion to do two Sundays and two weekdays, but I would support the recommendation from HR.
Okay, there's no motion on the floor yet, so, right, did you make that in the form of motion, Counsel Leahy?
Yeah, but I don't know if it gets seconded.
I second it.
Okay, motion by Counsel Leahy to double those ads, seconded by Counsel Kennedy. On the motion?
Yes. You mentioned that it was also, it would run in Monster, does it also run on Boston.com? Do you get Boston.com for the same dough?
Yes.
Okay.
And again, this was just suggestions. The Lowell Sun and the Boston Globe, and I realize they're two different papers, but the Lowell Sun will also run on Monster, you know, just to keep that in mind.
Okay. Do you think running it two times in the Globe, and I'm thinking it would be two weeks a pop, do you think that's excessive?
I do.
On the motion? Further discussion? Roll call?
The motion is what?
Yeah, what is the motion?
The motion made by, go ahead.
The motion is by Counsel Leahy, seconded by Kennedy, to run the ad in the Boston Globe for two Sundays and two weekdays.
Roll call. Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
No.
Counsel Milonazo?
No.
Counsel Rourke?
No.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Belanger?
No.
Mayor Elliott?
No.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes. Four aye, five, failed.
Motion fails. So reverting back to the original recommendation from the city auditor, with the MMA, the Boston Globe, the Lowell Sun, Mass Municipal Auditors and Accountants Association, Mass GFOA, entertain a motion to accept that recommendation by Counsel Milonazo, seconded by Counsel Martin. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion carries. Okay. Moving on to, so we're going to solicit the applications, deadline will stay on the auditors, the deadline will be the... The deadline will be the twenty-seventh, correct? Do members want us to set up a timeframe to review the applications and begin the app, revenue, resume, interview process? So the twenty-seventh, we will receive all the resumes. Do we want to take the week to review those resumes? Council, Council Kennedy?
My suggestion, Mr. Mayor, would be that we take a look at how many resumes we get.
Okay.
And maybe that would help us determine, for instance, if we get twenty resumes, then probably a week is very adequate. On the other hand, if we were to get sixty or eighty resumes, maybe some members would want more than, more than a week to review. And I think we have, we have time to make that decision later, we don't really need to make that decision right now, but the, I think we can make it more intelligently if we know how many resumes are going to be in the pile.
Okay. Council Belanger?
I think, Council Kennedy's on, has a good idea. I anticipate a high volume, especially with thirty days online and newspaper ads here and there, I think is more than ample amount of time, so I anticipate a high volume of applicants, so I think we should play it by ear and see what we're looking at at the time, and then designate the time we do need to review them. I think that's, I think that's proper.
Does that make sense to members? We'll see how many applications that we get. Council Martin?
I think Mrs. Callery had some, some, her hand up, did you?
I'm sorry. Ms. Callery?
Thank you. I just want, how do you want to receive the resumes? Normally, what we do is, once we get them all in, we make our copies, the job closes, we do an Excel spreadsheet on all the candidates, we list different things, whether they have their master's degrees, bachelor's, live in Lowell, just a little amount of information for you to follow along easier. Or if I get ten in, do you want to see them at that point?
Council Martin?
I think we should get them all at once, and all of us at the same time. And I, I remember having that sheet that you had prepared in the past, and I think that's helpful. So, once it closes, you know, we can get them, and, and then see how much time we think we need to review.
Council Belanger?
That, that's a, a good theory and all, but I, I still would like them accessible. I mean, if I have free time during the week, and I want to call Mary and say, can I come by and see what we have, pick up what we have for review, I'd like to be that accessible to me in the interim.
Discussion?
Well, we haven't done it that way in the past, for any, for any of our three jobs. I think we've always gotten them as a group, and I think it makes sense to continue that, that way.
Okay.
I mean, there's going to be, you know, people may withdraw, things would leak out potentially, it, it adds complication.
Council Rourke, then Council Melonazo, then Council Samaras.
If Council Martin made that motion, I would second it.
Okay. Did you make that in the form of?
I, I, yeah, I don't know that emotions, I guess I will, I'll move that we wait until the, the posting closes, and then as quickly thereafter as possible as HR can assemble a package that we all, we get all the resumes in the package, as soon as they are able to get them to us.
Motion by Council Martin. Second by Council Rourke to have HR hang on to all of the resumes until the deadline closes and prepare a package soon thereafter. Further discussion, Council Melonazo? Council Samaras?
Basically, a question to HR. Will you be able to give us an outline, in other words, for those who actually meet the criteria and those who don't? In other words, would you able, be able to list the candidates? Twice. And do they have the necessary degrees? Do they, I mean, I think it would just make things a lot simpler to, if HR could break that down.
Sure. That's not a problem.
Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion? Council Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the past, when we advertised and then we set a deadline, then the selection came, we, we got all, all the applicants, applications together, and let's say that we had ten, ten applicants, then we would narrow it down to five. This is how we did it, and, you know, if you had ten, and how we narrowed it down to five, any applicant that received five or more votes would be invited for the interview, that's how we did it. If fewer than five candidates received five votes, the top five vote-getters would be invited for the interview. We had public interviews, each candidate selected for the interview would appear before the city council in the council chamber for ninety-minute interview, but I'm not saying that that's how we have to do it, I'm saying that's how we did it in the past. Each councilor will get ten minutes to question the candidates. The order of interview will be selected at random by the city clerk. So we, that's how we did it in the past.
That sounds like a good process. Can I suggest to, to members that once the deadline has passed and we get the resumes, we call a special meeting to go over the criteria, the selection criteria, as well, I mean, at that time, we'll know how many resumes we have, and how many we want to narrow it down to, and then even perhaps set up an interview schedule. So if, if there's no objection, I'll make that, make that in the form of a motion, that following the deadline, that we set up a special meeting to go over the selection process.
Second.
Second by Council Mercia. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. And the opposed, so ordered. Anything, any other business on the auditors?
Do we vote on Council Martin's motion? I'm sorry.
Is it Council Martin's motion to get all the resumes at once and at the same time with a resource sheet after the posting has been closed?
You're right.
Second by Council Rourke.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. And the opposed, so ordered. Further, any further issues on the auditor, auditor, before we move on to the city manager process? Council Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can we do just a brief synopsis of what we did with the auditor? It's going to be advertised for four weeks in the, in the, with the suggestion that the human, Mary Callery made.
Correct.
And what is the, when are we putting the ad in? In, on the twenty-second and till the, I thought it was the twenty-fourth?
The, the motion that carried was to start placing the advertisement as soon as she could get into the newspaper, which is presumably the twenty-third, and the motion was to run it for thirty days, which is going to bring us till February twenty-third, which is a, which is a Sunday, correct? But that was a motion was for, for thirty days, so...
It should end on a Friday, Mr. Mayor, correct?
It, it should end on a Friday.
So it's on the twentieth.
So do we, do we want to go to the twenty-first?
Twenty-first.
Okay. The twenty-first. Is that okay with members? That gives a thirty-day notice.
Should it say, like, a time certain? Should it be at noon time or at five, the end of the business?
Close the business on, close the business on the twenty-first. Okay, Ms. Callery?
Yes, and we, it's, we always put a date on the back, and we always say by four P.M. Yeah, four.
P.M., okay.
The only, I mean, is that the vacation week? Common vacation week, school vacation week?
It'll end that week on, Councilor.
Right, so I, that's why, I mean, I don't, to me, it's more critical that it end on a business day, not necessarily a Friday, especially the Friday of a holiday week, that, you know, twenty-five percent of the people in the country have off. So, I mean, I, I'd rather go into the next week, even if it's not a Friday.
Do you want to make it Monday?
Monday, the twenty-fourth? That's a business day.
True.
Okay, Council Melonazo would still satisfy the, the thirty days?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Council Mercia, the other item to recap was the locations of the publications?
Yeah, that's fine.
And the timeframe?
No, I was just concerned about the timeframe.
The deadline, okay.
And are we saying deadline, the deadline to submit your applications, would, the deadline would be the twenty-fourth, Monday, February twenty-fourth?
On a business day.
By four o'clock?
Correct.
Okay, there you go.
Okay.
If, if, Mr. Mayor, just a point of clarification?
Council Melonazo?
They have to be received in the office, correct? They can't be date-stamped, and you receive it on the twenty-fifth. It has to be in the office physically, correct?
Correct.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the city manager, anything else in the auditor? Okay. Moving on to the city manager portion, let's start again with the job description, questions, discussion on the job description that was presented by Mary Callery, um, excuse me, Ms. Callery, Human Resources Director. Motion, entertain a motion on the floor to, to accept the amended or the additional information that has been included in the job description?
So what?
Motion by Councilor Melonazo, seconded by Councilor Samaras. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. And the opposed, job description is accepted. Moving on to the publication, timeframe, length. We, we did establish the criteria last week of August, excuse me, February twenty-eighth, with the salary negotiable, current salary negotiable. Further discussion on that timeframe? Council Samaras?
Are we doing the same timeframe as the auditors, or less?
No, that would not be the same timeframe. The auditors on the twenty-fourth, this one would be the twenty-eighth.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? There's really no motion on the floor on that, so publication of the advertisement, location, outlets. Council Melonazo?
Again, if you're talking about the recommendation from HR, correct? I would, I would move that we accept the recommendation to publish the city manager's ad in the publications, as noted from the Human Relations Department.
Motion by Council Melonazo to adopt the recommendation from the Human Relations Office to publish in the list that were provided, seconded by Council Mercia. All those in favor, signify, signify by saying aye. And the opposed, so ordered. Council Kennedy, did you have a question?
Yeah, and, Mr. Mayor, I would move for the advertising for the city manager, that that run two times, two, two Sundays, two weekdays, in both the Boston Globe and Lowell Sun.
Well, the motion carried, okay, motion by Council Kennedy to change the original motion that carried to double the advertisement in the Boston Globe. Motion by Council Kennedy, second?
Second.
Second by Council Samaras. Discussion? Roll call.
Council Martin?
Yes.
Council Mercia?
No.
Council Melonazo?
No.
Council Rourke?
No.
Council Samaras?
Yes.
Council Belanger?
No.
Mayor Elliott?
No.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Foyers fail.
Foyers. Motion fails. We already adopted the original recommendation, so that will be the, that's what we, we will proceed with. Any, any further discussion? Council Kennedy, any further discussion on the city manager? Any other items?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, just for clarification to Mrs. Callery, now, on the twenty-third, when these ads start, does it stay on, it stays online throughout without interruption, am I correct? Okay, all right. Thank you.
Council Melonazo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can we move on to the draft ad? I just have a comment on the draft ad.
Yep. Is that what you want to do, Council Martin? Move on to the ad, or are we still on the advertising?
No, I, I thought we had acted on that, but take that up.
Right. Council Melonazo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the draft ad, which is the last sheet in the packet from, from HR, I would just recommend that instead of indicating that we're seeking responsible, upstanding, and morally strong candidate, I would simply use the word qualified candidates for the position of city manager, and that the city manager is directly responsible to the city council, not to the city, to the city council, under the plan E government. And then if there's some way in the second paragraph where they, it talks about written oral skills and fiscal abilities, again, I think we would all agree they have to be able to do more than, say, balance a checkbook, so I don't know if we talk about municipal fiscal abilities or governmental fiscal abilities, probably governmental fiscal abilities. And I would just offer those as suggestions to the ad.
Okay. Motion to amend the advertisement with the language suggested by Council Melonazo, seconded by Council Samaras. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. And the opposed, motion carries. Council Melonazo, if you could provide those amendments to the clerk, as well as to the Director of Human Resources?
I will.
I would appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
Further discussion on, on the city manager process? Okay, similarly, setting up a timeframe, should, should the council meet in another special meeting to set up the criteria once the number of applications have been received, and we have a better idea on the timeframe that we need to, to set aside to review and set up the process? Okay. Council Rourke?
Mr. Mayor, we receive the applications the same way as you do for the auditor?
Okay, motion to receive this, to receive the applications similar, or the same as the process with the auditor. Motion seconded by Council Melonazo. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. And the opposed, motion carries. Further discussion on the city manager selection process? Hearing none, entertain a motion to adjourn by Councilor Martin, seconded by Councilor Rourke. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. And the opposed, motion carries. Thank you.